Okay, we will begin our meeting at 3:00 PM. Roll call.
Trustee Bartow.
Here.
Trustee Matoye.
Here.
Trustee Crane.
Here.
Trustee Anderson.
Trustee Ersoilo.
Here.
Trustee Weigand.
Here.
Trustee Yelsey.
Here.
Dr. Smith.
Here.
Okay, move to the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion? Move adoption.
Second.
Moved by trustee Yelsey, seconded by trustee Matoye. Roll call vote.
Trustee Bartow.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Ersoilo.
Yes.
Trustee Weigand.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Wait. I appoint a clarification. If I would like to make an edit on the minutes, may I do so now or?
We're not on the minutes.
We're not on the minutes.
Oh, sorry.
We're on the agenda.
Sorry about that. Apologies.
The minutes will be after and open. Thank you. Okay, move to community input on closed session items. Do we have any community inputs?
No.
We do not. Thank you. We will now move to closed session. The items are A, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation case number LA-CE 6414-E; B, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation case number G061034; C, conference with labor negotiator; B, I'm sorry; D, public employee discipline dismissal release employment; E, public employee discipline dismissal release; F, public employee discipline dismissal release employment number 202202HR; G, confidential student matter, one case; H, student discipline, one case. We move to closed session at 3:02 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. In closed session, by a vote of seven to zero, the board took action to terminate the contract of employee number 202203.
We'll now move on to pledge allegiance. One of our student board member lead, thank you.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we move on to adoption of the minutes. May I have a motion to adopt the minutes? Move adoption.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Yelsey and seconded by trustee Anderson. Roll call vote.
Trustee Bartow.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Ersoilo.
Yes.
Trustee Weigand.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
And now we moved on to our recognition of fall athletic sports champions, which is exciting.
Yes, we've got Dr. Bauermeister that's going to come up and bring up the coaches and principal and the team, most importantly.
President Bartow, members of the board, Dr. Smith, cabinet, and distinguished guests, it's with great pleasure that I present to you another CIF champion from the fall season. Tonight, we'll be recognizing the Newport Harbor High School football team. Championship seasons are forged in different ways. Some teams dominate from day one and walk through the competition. For the Sailors, theirs was a story this year of perseverance, of staying the course and believing in one another and being rewarded for that faith by a magical run to a CIF Division VI championship. This time, I'd like to call up Newport Harbor principal Sean Bolden to introduce his coach and the champs. Dr. Bolden.
Thank you, Dr. Bauermeister, President Bartow, members of the board, Dr. Smith, executive cabinet, distinguished guests. Thank you for recognizing this football team. Forty-ninth CIF title. We've been celebrating a lot of CIF titles at Newport Harbor. Fortunately, it's the fourth CIF title in school history. Four years ago, we had the impossible task of filling in and replacing a legend. Jeff Brinkley was there for 32 years, won three championships. And four years ago, we made a decision to bring in someone new to rebuild the program and to make it in their own image. And Coach Loftous really, really did. You'll see tonight that the beautiful diversity at our school is woven within the fabric of this team and they're emblematic of who we are as a school, as a community, and as an educational group of scholars and instructors and so forth. But I think that the run was magical, like girls' basketball, they caught lightning in a bottle. And the one variable or the one takeaway from all of this were the close games that we had in the playoffs. And the first round, the second round, they weren't close games. I liked those games. I liked winning by 30 points with five minutes left, knowing that you've got a nice ride home or you're at home and you're thinking about dinner, what am I going to watch on Netflix, that sort of stuff. But it's those nail biters. And Dr. Smith and Dr. Haley, principal of Costa Mesa High School, played football. They coached football, so they know football. And our team was down in the semifinal and I got a text from Dr. Smith. Of course, you know, everyone wants to know the score, how much time's left, who's got the ball. And both Dr. Haley and Dr. Smith were like, we got them right where we want them. I think we were down by 14 at that point. We came back in the semifinal game, won 20 to 19. In the final, we were down 21 points and we wound up winning 42 to 35. And at the beginning of the fourth quarter, Dr. Smith, Dr. Haley, we got them right where we want them. We're going to win this game. And sure enough, we did. And after the game, you know, I talked to Coach Loftous and we were like, we're a fourth-quarter team. I'm a golfer. I don't understand football. I love football, but I don't like those games. They age you a bit. But I'd like to introduce Coach Loftous, his coaching staff, incredible run. Again, fourth CIF title in school history for football, forty-ninth title in school history overall. So congratulations to Newport Harbor football.
First, I'd like to start off and thank the school board, the superintendent, Mr. Smith, and the cabinet members all here. And thank you from the bottom of our hearts for allowing us to be a part of today's festivities. It's an exciting day for all the players, all the coaches, and our program and our parents as a whole. If there's one thing I think that really sums up this season and what has really just encompassed, you know, basically two seasons in a year is, and about this football team is their ability to fight adversity. And I think that's one thing you guys could really, you know, be very proud of, of these kids. They've been through a lot, without doubt, for the last couple of years with everything that's gone on. And, you know, when the season seemed to be at its most bleak, we got an opportunity to get to the playoffs. We won the first one, then they won the second one, then they got the third one, and then all of a sudden, they come back from perhaps one of the worst comebacks, worst holes you could put yourself in as a football team. And they never flinched, they didn't waver, they trusted each other. As a team, they've always called themselves, break it down on a family, and that's what it was. It was a family effort and they gave their best effort and just fell one game short in a state title run. And so their ability to be a gritty team, to see that the hard work pays off and fighting for those little inches, they add up and they matter and to find success, I think you guys should be really proud of what they accomplished because it wasn't easy, for sure. And so thank you again for having us here today. So I'm going to call the players out one by one. First one is Wyatt Atkins, freshman. Sorry. Yeah, okay, sorry. All right. Next, we have Sebastian, or sorry, Matthew Beekman. Then, sorry, Sebastian, I missed you. Senior Brody Bradfield. Jackson Brennan. Jack Sarita. Johnny Cheks. Carson Diavola. Cameron Denune. Daniel Flores. Jeremy Francisco Ost. Leonard Francisco Ost. Eric Folsing. Damian Gallegos. Carter Gomez. A.J. Gutron Moore, senior. Gabriel Hendricks. Lanell Harquinn. McKay Ketchum. Amon McCollough. Brandon Medina. Tanner Mir. Javier Padilla. John Peña. Hudson Perez. Omar Rafat. Daniel Remson. John Richardson. Mackai Sung-Yo. Richard Sanchez. Jackson Young. Grayson Simon. And then Zachary Zamora, senior. There are a number of, unfortunately, other players who wish they could be here. They did have some time commitments with track meets and things of that nature. We are a growing program, which is exciting. The first day, I came to Harbor almost four seasons ago, we had 40 kids in our program. And going into next season, we're expecting 110 kids on our JV varsity program and will hopefully with another good size, we're expecting about 50 to 60 more freshmen to join our program. So it's exciting to see the numbers grow. There's a lot of excitement and we're very blessed to be a part of Newport Harbor and Newport Mesa Unified School District. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just very quickly, Coach Loftous would like to introduce the coaches as well that are here tonight. Some of them, again, can't be here because they're coaching other sports. And just a final shout out to the district and everyone involved in the program because, as you know, football's a community of cheerleaders, marching band, football, and we go on the road. I mean, it's like a caravan out there. So thank you from transportation all the way across to the school board for all the
JV head coach Frank Albers. Quarterback coach and our new JV head coach Ray Diavola. Receivers coach Andre Valesquez. D-line coach Mark Denune. All right, I'd like to extend an invitation. I know our parents are eager to know, but if any of the board members or cabinet members would like to join us Monday at 5:00 PM, we're going to be doing our ring ceremony with the championship ring at Newport Harbor High School. And if anybody would love to join us, we'd love to host you. Thank you.
All right, we're ready to move on to student board member reports. We'll start with Nicole McMillan.
Good evening, President Bartow, Superintendent Smith, and board members. Our topic tonight was to give a recap of our experience as a student board member as our time here is beginning to come to a close. First, my expectations were a little unsure. I know this is a pretty new program, but I did know the person who was in my place last year, so I had a vague idea of what it would be like. But before I spoke at my first meeting last year, I'd never even been in this room before. As for what it was like, I'd like to say that it was great. I've gotten close to my fellow student board members and we've had a great time bonding at these meetings. It's cool to compile these reports. We're usually asked about stuff like what the students think or what they want, how a program is going, et cetera. And it's super important since the district served these schools, so we need to know what the people want. And it's certainly a lot easier for people to tell me how it's going rather than an adult that they might not know. And I know that to some people that might be thinking of joining, it might seem a little scary with all of these official people up here, but it's really not. The board has been very welcoming to us and helping us adjust to this environment. It's also very cool to meet and get to know the people in charge here. It was, of course, a little intimidating at first, speaking in front of everyone, but now that I've gotten to know what it's like, I can definitely recommend it. One of the many positive things is I think it makes us feel important, especially if you're up here where I am right now. It's really cool. But we are important and it definitely gives us a chance to see what it would be like to have a role here as an adult. I'd never had an experience like this before, but being able to actually have a vote in what happens in our district is really empowering and it's very real. So one minor thing, sometimes getting here is a challenge since we do stay pretty late at times, but the board has been super lenient and generous if we ever need to go. So it's been a great experience and I hope to continue it next year. And for any prospective student board members, I highly encourage you to join.
Right, our next student board member report is from Newport Harbor High School, Kate Cherry.
Good evening, Dr. Smith, President Bartow, and members of the board. Over this past year, I've really enjoyed my time being a student board member. I've learned so much about how our district is run and also the importance of having the general public interact with local government. I've also loved getting to know the other student board members as well as board members. Before I was a student board member, I didn't really understand school board and its importance. And so throughout the year, I've learned all that goes on in the inner workings of our district. And that's been really interesting to me because, again, before I've done this, I've never stepped in this room before. I loved working with the others in the district as well, since everyone cares so deeply about the students of the school and they are all passionate about creating a safe and fun school environment at all grade levels and schools. All board members are very understanding of the importance of schools and grades are inflexible with us trying to understand what it means to be a school board member originally in the year when we have no clue what we're doing. So being a student school board member has been a great experience and I would recommend it to anybody who is interested in applying for next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
From Costa Mesa High School, Sophia Catania.
Good evening, President Bartow, members of the board, and superintendent Smith. I would like to start off by saying that I have really enjoyed my experience as a student board member. I am so honored to have been able to represent Costa Mesa High School this school year. My experience has exceeded my initial expectations. I went into the position thinking I would attend the meetings and relay updates and information to our school. In addition to this, however, as student board members, we are listened to and are given the opportunity to express how each of our schools are doing and our opinions of certain topics. We would collect student input from our school communities and report it so all schools are equally represented in the choices being made. It has been a great experience being able to interact with the board, especially our liaisons, President Bartow and Vice President Matoye, who have made me and my fellow school board representatives feel like we are part of the process and have shown us how they truly prioritize the student and community opinion in all their decisions. Furthermore, I enjoyed hearing the input and stances of the community every meeting, expressing their concerns on both agendized and non-agendized items. Being exposed to different beliefs and opinions within our district has made me appreciate our community's diversity. I'd like to thank my fellow school board representatives and Vice President Matoye for their kindness and open communication that have led this to be the eye-opening and learning experience it has been. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Normally, we would have our Harbor Council PTA report, but Lisa was not able to be here this evening. So we will move on to CSEA and NMFT president's comments, starting with CSEA President Pam
Good evening, Board President Bartow, School Board Superintendent Dr. West Smith, Cabinet and guests. CSEA appreciates this opportunity to speak tonight. It has been wonderful to both see the students and coworkers' smiling faces again since the updated mandate, such a simple human gesture that has been sorely missed the past several years. As we continue to work together through the endemic, we thank classified employees for their diligence in supporting education and in-person learning for the students of Newport Mesa USD. We are looking forward to upcoming negotiations. Thank you again from CSEA Chapter 18.
Thank you. Next, we'll have NMFT President Sarah Awater.
Good evening. That was really inspiring hearing from those young people. You guys did great. I don't even know if we had school boards when I was growing up. Good evening, President Bartow, board members, superintendent Smith, and cabinet members. It's good to be able to speak to you tonight. The first thing I want to talk to you about tonight is the concerns raised around special education that have come up recently at every check-in meeting I've had at various sites, including elementary, middle, and high school. Many people have reached out individually as well. It's our view that these are mostly longstanding issues that have been exacerbated by but not created by the pandemic. Also, please note that the comments related to workload are not to the exclusion of what teachers are experiencing right now in their classrooms, but I'm focusing tonight on what we're hearing from special education teachers, speech and language pathologists, counselors, psychologists, and support staff. First is the issue of greatly expanded workload. Sped teachers are in great need of extra support right now. It's my understanding that there are currently 70 open aid positions in the district. This shortage puts a tremendous amount of pressure on the staff. They're on virtual double time and I'm being told are doing it willingly to ensure the safety and quality of instruction of their students. Teachers are regularly working through lunch and breaks just to keep afloat. The bottom line is that the shortage of aides is being absorbed by the sped teachers and service providers to an overwhelming extent. Second is the perception by everyone to which we speak and surrounding special education that the changes in the special ed programs and the forthcoming next-year plans for the programs are not being communicated well enough at any level. There is consistent communication by staff to us that teachers do not know what the plan is to meet requirements with the severe staff shortage, other than to work in a flurry of emergency-like mentality for now. But I hear it over and over again, I don't know how much longer we can do this or how much longer we can keep this up. Sped teams are proud of the efficient work teams they're relying on within sites making it work, but they say the same thing, it's just not sustainable. Finally, there are many questions and concerns about how students are being placed and why. Classroom teachers have increased student trauma and behavioral issues and the support they need is simply not there. We know there exist structures in place, but there is a disconnect between what's happening within written plans to what's happening in the trenches, if you will. Everyone knows it's not for lack of staff wanting to assist, but for impacted workloads. We're also hearing a lot that sped teachers have been denied workdays to prepare for IEPs. This time resource of protected uninterrupted time is necessary for teachers to do the work that supports students and shields the district from liability. Many of these concerns are historical but have been made worse by changes in program and staff shortages. We have frequently heard that the sail team, which seems to be a great idea in concept, but we have yet to feel the benefits of its full execution. We want to be assured of the district's high level of commitment to this program because we're hearing that often that members of the team are on temporary contracts and due to staff shortages and other demands are frequently pulled away to perform other duties. We will be requesting information so that we can determine the current rate of effectiveness. It's also concerning to us that a special ed meeting occurred and the outcome of that meeting left many questions unanswered related to students in the mod severe category. Also conveyed was an overall confusion regarding the structuring of the programs. Clearly, the staff shortages are out a great deal out of our control. What we're expecting, though, is to be provided with more operational clarity from top to bottom and back up to the top again. This is, you know, this is one of my things I need to do is, you know, when tons of people are telling me there's a problem, this is just part of the process, you know? And next, I want to let everyone know that the teacher of the year is underway and the recipients are going to be notified at the end of this week. The two that have moved on to the, are moving on to the county level have been celebrated a little bit at their site and we're going to put out more information about that. So I wanted to end on a positive and thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we will move on to community input.
the regular meeting agenda. Comments on non-agenda topics are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person. By order of the Brown Act, Section 549, 54.2, the board will take no action nor have any discussion on non-agendized items. The superintendent may provide clarification during superintendent's comments.
Thank you. We have five comment cards, so we're going to move ahead with Bill Dunlap.
Thank you very much, President Barto, board members, and Dr. Smith. I found out the best way to speak first is to be the last one coming in because your card's on top, so thank you. Anyway, I appreciate your time. I'll make this brief. There's a group of us that have been working on trying to understand how the district is going to deal with critical race theory, and it's been floating around for a long time, and we had bits and pieces of it. And we are trying to bring together a cohesive group to address that issue and whether we should, how we're going to deal with it in the district. And one of the things that's happening in Orange County and other school districts, specifically right now, your Belinda Placentia, has gone through two drafts of a resolution that would prohibit critical race theory. Easily said, but what does that mean? What is critical race theory to me, to you, to the teachers? So we're going to have to put our arms around that, and what we would like to do and suggest is that we have either a study session or an open forum, allowing good, strong debate on both sides of it, those that may be in favor and those that are not. This somewhat took place at Orange County Board of Education. If you recall, they brought in experts and had testimony about critical race theory to better understand it. So that's something that we would like to promote. We're going to be meeting with individual board members to discuss that and how we can move that forward. It's interesting, critical race theory, you know, part of it, if I understand it correctly, and if you agree, you may or may not, is the whole idea of trying to segregate and trying to pit one group of people against another, which we think is totally disingenuous. We went through the Solo Cup deal, which was an interesting point, ironically, that we had oppressors and victims, we had very insensitive kids that didn't understand what they were doing. It was gross negligence on their part regarding what took place during World War II, and yet, in critical race theory, they're also talking about oppressors and victims again. Oppressors, in this case being if you're American and white, you're a victim if you're anything else. So we want to see if we can bridge that gap together and find out what that means, and if it's something we don't want in our district, we think a resolution would be appropriate. The other item I want to just mention quickly is we think it's time for curriculum transparency. Other districts are embracing this, which is basically to put the curriculum online so parents don't have to go through their students' backpack to find out what they're learning, what they're being tested on. There's no reason it can't go online. We're in that environment today with the internet and so forth. So those two things, we're going to be talking about in the future with you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Move on to Grace Hobbs.
Hi, everyone. I'm Grace Hobbs. I wasn't expecting to be speaking about this today, but I'm pretty upset about it. There's a Healthy Kids survey floating around the district right now that I got a notice from CDM about, and apparently it's a survey that 5th, 7th, 9th, and 11th graders are supposed to be taking at school. And I got a notice on Friday afternoon from CDM, and on Tuesday, apparently, the kids were supposed to be taking the survey. It was something that had an opt-out on the bottom of it that said, "Oh, you can opt out of this," yet it didn't have a date of when the survey was supposed to be taken, but yet we could opt out of it. So I kind of, you know, skimmed through my emails and didn't really think much of it until I got an email from a friend saying, "Have you seen this horrendous survey that the kids are supposed to take on Tuesday in skills class?" So I opened the survey up, and my mouth dropped, and I had a panic attack because my 7th grader was supposed to be taking the survey in class. And the questions that are on the survey, I would hope that you guys have all read, are horrible. They're things that I would never want my 7th grader to look at because they're leading questions. I'm not sure that I feel comfortable even saying them in front of this group of people. To me, a health survey would be how much exercise do you get? How many fruits and vegetables do you eat? Do you spend, you know, 30 minutes outside after school? You know, what's your calorie, fat and calorie intake? That's a health survey. This is a lie. That's not a health survey when you're asking children if they're, you know, what their sexual preferences are when they're 12 and 13 years old. That is not a survey that includes your health. Okay? So after forwarding it to probably about 100 different parents, everybody's angry. CDM is now postponing their survey because parents are so upset about the fact that the survey was sent out with an opt-out on a Friday afternoon with no date, and it was supposed to be started today. So the teacher emailed me and said, "Now we're waiting because parents are upset." Well, of course, parents are upset because you're saying it's a health survey. It's not a health survey. It's a sexual preference survey with very leading questions about drugs and alcohol on it, and I'm not sure why we would be giving that to children that are 13 years old. The 5th grade survey is a little different. I did look at it. It's not as bad, but still bad because it's talking about drugs and alcohols, you know, leading questions for 5th graders. So I'd like to understand, first of all, there's some supplemental questions. Nobody's really sure. I know somebody did reach out to Michelle. We're not really sure if those supplemental questions are on there or not. We want to know that, and we'd also like to know when this all started because none of us know anything about this till this year. Seems to be a common theme with our school district. We're a little concerned about that.
Thank you. Next, we have Wendy Lys.
Good evening, President Barto, members of the board, and Dr. Smith. My name is Wendy Lys. I was a school board member from 1994 to 2002, and also on the Costa Mesa City Council from '06 to '14. So it's hard to believe, but it's been three years since Mr. Dunlap mentioned it, the Red Solo Cup incident. And it kind of rocked our city and our community that we were embarrassed. In preparing for tonight, I found an article that actually appeared in Education Week in 2019, "The Holocaust Is Ancient History For Many Students." And it refers to the experience here, not even two months ago, a photo showing students making a Nazi salute over a swastika made of solo cups at a weekend party garnered extensive news coverage. It didn't reference Newport Mesa. I'm a teacher, and I often use Freedom Riders, the movie, and the Freedom Riders book, the three different editions, to teach my students about the Holocaust because they need to know, and they need to have empathy and compassion, and they are intrigued. And I also teach literature with Anne Frank. But I bring this to your attention because after that incident, I signed up to join the Human Relations Task Force meetings that we had across the way. And I know that Dr. Brower, my sirs here, and I even organized this chart, which I printed off the website, because it was what you voted on for action. In other words, how can we not let this happen again? Unfortunately, we had COVID, and that kind of changed everything. But what happened, in my opinion, was instead of focusing on the Holocaust, which Barry Friedland invited me to go to the 2019 Holocaust event at Chapman, where young people are recognized for their writing and their video performances, we focused on implicit bias and other subjects that had nothing to really do with the Holocaust per se. I went over to the Chapman University Awards presentation three weeks ago. You know what? We didn't have, we had two schools, only two schools that entered. The T-Winkle had three entries, and Early College had three entries, and the Early College won honorable mention. And we should recognize that person. I have their name here. I'm almost out of time. Emma Bronker won, and her teacher is Anne Laureen. I don't know why this is not a priority in this district, but it's time to do what we said we were going to do and emphasize the Holocaust and not critical race theory. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Dennis Eschendorf.
Good evening, President Barto, distinguished trustees, Superintendent Smith. Dr. Shaka stressed that getting students through Algebra I in 9th grade is job one. Pre-teach, after-school tutors, whatever works is necessary. All hands on deck. If students don't pass Algebra I the first time, life in high school becomes a quagmire. Wisely, California law only requires Algebra I and one additional math course. Two years. Focus on the law. Escape the siren call. The trap of UC is the district's main goal. Follow up Algebra I with mandatory geometry creates a road to nowhere for far too many students. It neither supports Algebra II nor data science well. Many will claim geometry provides value, but they ignore its incredibly high opportunity cost. Treat geometry as elective, not mandatory. Algebra I, followed by Algebra II, anchors an AP Calculus pathway open to all with incredible results. Algebra I, followed by Financial Algebra, supports both AP Calculus and Data Science, AP Statistics pathways. More subtly, offering 10th graders engaging, hands-on, applied statistics allows all students the chance to succeed while letting them either continue with data science or simply end their math journey usefully. And yes, students can still take geometry. In short, follow Algebra I with student choice. Make Financial Algebra the default. No skip courses and equity can work together. Accelerated students in middle school would thrive in 8th grade geometry. In effect, offer geometry algebra and algebra geometry sequences. Lastly, people claim that geometry teaches critical thinking. I wish. In truth, only 40% of students are college-ready in math, which means 40% have a 75% chance of getting a C in algebra. Pathetic. We are actually memetic creatures. We copy, we model. Students leave schools with models on how the world works, and we pray they create a deep ones. We fail when they model learning as hoop jumping and screen watching. Measure your policy by cutting the need for credit recovery. Not the number of UC-eligible hoop jumpers, not useless state test scores, while ignoring the repeat treadmill comprised of damaged, deadened lives. Without sacrificing the top 5%, make learning without failure your goal for all students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Christopher Arganear.
Good evening, Newport Mesa. I am Christopher Arganear, candidate for Orange County Board of Education. Now, last meeting, we had a consultant come and present to the board, a million-dollar program. It's going to create this great new idea to take students away from their homes, take students away from their homework, in order to give them an extra math class to help them with the regular math class. Well, I, this is a desperate attempt to raise college-ready numbers. By the consultant's own admission, Newport Mesa already graduates more college-ready students than there are college positions in California. I want this board to stop the ever higher spendings, to get ever smaller results, to get that extra 1% ready for college where there's no seat for them. We need to focus on everybody else that, you know, there are other options. There are businesses, there are other ways to get education when you're done with high school. You don't have to worship the god of college in order to get there. There are plenty of businesses that offer tuition assistance. There are plenty of businesses that offer management training. There are even businesses that offer, you know, technical training. And there are thousands of other options for kids that want to study further and want to, you know, learn to code, do woodwork, you know, work in auto mechanics, welding. There are lots of other options. We can't worship the god of college. The colleges are full. So my suggestion is that you divert these funds that really aren't getting the results and help kids realize that there are other options, and it's okay to pursue other options. Don't stigmatize the kids that have trouble taking tests and that don't want to go to AP classes. My name is Christopher Arganear. I'm an architect. I'm a parent. I live here in Costa Mesa, and I'm running for the Board of Education for Orange County, and I ask for your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we move on to Consent Calendar Number 18. Did we have comments on this? Oh, I'm so sorry. Skip ahead. Yes, please. Apologize.
No, I thought you were skipping me.
No, no, no. It's very important. I made some little arrows to where I was supposed to read things, and that was my fault.
Yeah, so, and just to let the board know, we've met with Mr. Dunlap, continue to, we've discussed his ideas about what they might bring forward. We've invited him to come back. President Barto was with me in our last meeting. Hank Bankster, when he was here before, said, "We don't teach CRT." I've been here and said, "We're not going to teach it while I'm here." But I understand, and Mr. Dunlap, he mentioned this, the nuance of what is the definition? What does that really mean? And so we've invited him back and always will, and look forward to seeing him and continuing this conversation. And then curriculum transparency, I'll certainly work with the staff to see where there is more we can do there. Certainly nothing that any of you up here, the staff, the table, are trying to hide. So I'll circle back to the team and figure out where we have gaps with that. The Healthy Kids survey is something that we've been doing for many years in the district. It's not a health survey. It's Healthy Kids, and it looks at a variety of health indicators. Our team, in the fall, decided that coming back from the pandemic, they wanted to see how students were doing, and it collects anonymous data. But overall, what were some of those things they were seeing that they could help with? Maybe some interventions, some supports? And so they decided, because it was anonymous, because parents can opt out of it, that they would like to see that data. And so that decision was made in the fall. And if the rollout was ineffective, then that's certainly something I can work on with the team to make sure that, you know, parents know in advance, so it's not the day of and things like that. And if there's some confusion around how you opt out, we certainly want parents to have that right. So any confusion therein is on us, and we'll work with the team to make sure they're communicating that. In fact, they're supposed to be reaching out again to parents to say, "If there's any confusion about how to opt out, let us know because at the site, we'll support you in that." Recognize the student. I think her name was Emma, I believe, but Ms. Lys and I, we communicate, and I'll reach out to her and find out what the student's name is. I think that's absolutely a great.
I have it. I know. I've known her since she was born.
Good, good. Well, then I'll reach out to both of you, just to make sure that Wendy feels listened to as well, and then you can give me that also. And let's celebrate the student. That's awesome. The math pathways, I think, you know, a lot of that was about the notion of a UC default graduation requirement, and that certainly isn't something this district has engaged right now. During Dr. Shaka's presentation, one of our staff members, there was a conversation about, "Do people do that?" That isn't something that this district has engaged yet, and I certainly haven't been directed by this board to look into that currently. And I think that's what our last comments were about as well, perhaps Dr. Shaka's presentation. There certainly aren't any funds going to making the UC grad requirements the default graduation requirements, so no funds are being used for that. We don't have any consultants right now in the district making that the priority. And certainly, we have robust- And certainly, we have robust CTE programs in this district. I've been amazed at the things that this district teaches students to know and be able to do. Critically acclaimed programs. In fact, we recognized a state winner last board meeting in the culinary arts. Certainly, that's a career for folks. And there are many, many more. I would just say this. We're not telling students they have to go to college. Students should have a choice, but the system should never choose for them. So it's our obligation to prepare students for whatever choice they want to make, hard stop. And that's what we'll do, you know, here in the district. And that's it on agendized topics.
Thank you. And again, I apologize. I make notes when people talk. Sometimes it distracts me. All right, so we've got, now moving on to community input on agendized items.
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items on the regular meeting agenda. Comments on agenda items are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. Speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person. Speaker cards for items on the discussion action calendar may be held until that item is considered by the board, if the speaker prefers.
All right, we have five cards on our consent calendar. And the additional items, we have additional comments coming. Those will be with the items themselves. So on item 18E1, we first call Alicia B.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Smith. My name is Alicia. I'm a mother of two, a school psychologist, board-certified behavior analyst, and a very concerned citizen. An aggressive slate of COVID-19-related bills to mandate vaccines for children to allow 12- to 17-year-olds to get the vaccine without parental consent and more remain in play under the dome at the Capitol. Taken together, the adoption of these bills would make California an outlier amongst states, and it would give the country's strictest COVID-19 regulations. Why would we want to advance this kind of policy that would further burden districts? Within the district, each year enrollment rates have seen a sharp decline. In addition to shrinking enrollment dropout rates, limited academic progress, failing grades, and looming mental health crisis are a warning for an even greater education crisis in California. I am standing before you, stated again as a concerned citizen, one of the many that you were elected and appointed to represent. As you work for the best education interest of all, I want to remind you that we, the people, design the scope of influence on legislative outcomes. You are required to engage all stakeholders, including the community, on perspectives and positions. We demand that the consulting and advocacy agreement between Capital Advisors Group LLC engage parents in communication and decisions as required by law within the state of California and within your district policy and goals. For far too long, you have given power to the state and unelected officials and rather than the families that you were required to represent. I am here to remind you that you will be held accountable for not only engagement, but the outcomes that represent the areas that you serve. We are not yet celebrating the hold on AB 1993. So Assemblymember Buffy Wick intends to work with labor and employers to allow space for progress and ultimately come to the table to make sure that all workers are vaccinated. We remain vigilant and need you to advocate with us and for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we move on to, also on 18E1, Danielle M.
Hi, everybody. This is regarding the superintendent's approval of consulting and advocacy agreement between Newport Mesa Unified and Capital Advisors Group. I guess I'm just confused why there is going to be, money's going to a group to push the interests of the district, advance the interests, implementation, pursuing the interests at the Capitol. What interests are those? How do we know that the 4,000-plus travel every month that you're going to be paying this consulting agency is going to be advancing what we, the people, who vote you into power, what we want? Not what some bureaucrat says or what's going? I'm so upset because we're here every month advocating for what we want, and nobody seems to be listening. So now there's going to be an extra layer, and this person, this group, is going to be pushing for policies. And who are they accountable to? To you guys? Why not to us? We're the ones whose kids are in this district. We're the ones who are here every single month advocating for our kids and trying to get you guys to listen. And now we're going to have lobbyists lobbying for goodness knows what at the Capitol? There are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and there's more than that. There are all of these in the Assembly and the Senate regarding vaccines and laws and mandates. What are they, what is this consulting firm going to lobby on all of these issues? I mean, there are dozens of them. This is just a few. So officially, I disagree with paying a lobbying firm. Why don't you go out into the community and see what your constituents want and then take that to the state Capitol? Why are we paying a lobbyist? I don't, I just don't understand. It's the parents who are the most important things. We vote you into office. The lobbyists don't have anything to do with that. The Capitol doesn't have anything to do with that. And our property taxes pay for our kids' schooling. We have the most say, and we should have we should have first say. And community involvement should come first before going to some lobbying firm who's accountable to none of us.
Thank you. Now we have Haley Jenkins.
Good evening, Superintendent Smith, President Barto, and members of the board. I'm here tonight to request that you delay your vote regarding the hiring of Kevin Gordon and the Capital Advisors Group. Before shelling out $4,000 a month of taxpayer money, I feel it's important to ask parents and community members if this is the person that we want to lobby for our children, because I'm sure that hasn't been asked yet. Knowing what we know regarding Mr. Gordon and his political background, I'm not certain that he is the correct person to advise and fight on the behalf of our children's well-being. Honestly, I'm not really certain that you need to hire anyone as I feel this is your duty as elected board members. In every social media post lately from many of you, I see, I advocated for this, I advocated for that, and you're all very proudly advocating for something. So between all of you actually doing your jobs and all of the parents and community members that call and email and show up here every month to share their concerns with you, I think we could get it done for free. There are many, many bad bills coming down the pipeline in Congress right now, and parents have been here to discuss and beg you, month after month, to do something about them. The public have been advising you for free, as I said. I look at the crazy things happening in our district this past year, and I urge you to listen to the people that are here voicing their concerns over these issues instead of hiring somebody that's all the way in Sacramento. In the least, please put it to a parent-community vote before you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Bill Dunlap.
Thank you for making the list a little farther down. I was going to go to dinner, but I didn't get that in. Anyway, so you've heard from the ladies about our issue with the consultant agreement. I guess from a procedural protocol standpoint, someone who's been a consultant, hired consultants, did we do bids? Did we take bids on this? Normally, in the public arena, you would get two to three bids, and those bids would be reviewed for their scope, dollar amount, and so forth. If you didn't take bids, I think you might be in violation of one of your own rules, which is you are not supposed to spend public money without it going through a bid process. You do that with the school construction. You do that with everything else. So that's one question. Two, Dr. Smith, I'm aware that you know Kevin Gordon somewhat, and I think that relationship should be disclosed to see if there's any conflict of interest regarding that, especially because Mr. Gordon worked in Sacramento. You've worked in Sacramento. So I think the public would like to see that as well. The other part is consulting and advocacy. The ladies have mentioned it somewhat already. But what are we advocating for? As we've talked about, we've got these bills pending up in Sacramento. Are we going to, or is the district going to have him advocate for or against those bills? We need to know that. It's interesting to note that the teachers in the state of California, and it's pretty much all over the United States, the latest poll shows that 87% of the teachers are liberal or Democrat. That means 13% are Republican. This district is at least 50/50 Democrat/Republican, and I would say it's more Republican. And so we have a situation where we may be hiring a consultant, as been mentioned before, that doesn't represent the constituents that are paying $20,000 per student to have them educated. So I think you ought to look into those things. One, did we do bids on this? And two, what is he going to be advocating for? And three, does Dr. Smith have a relationship? And is that something that we should discuss? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Wendy Leece.
Thank you, Board President, members of the board, Dr. Smith. This year, I will have been a taxpayer in this school district for 50 years. All five of my children, at one time, attended the Newport Mesa schools. $4,000 a month is ridiculous when we don't know what he's going to be advocating for and when we have all these controversial bills that have to deal with children and parents. And unfortunately, items like this are like hidden for most people. They wouldn't even know that we're doing this tonight. I would respectfully ask you to postpone this until, we're kind of like you're putting the cart before the horse, because you need a process to listen to the community, especially on these bills. SB 866, it lowers the age of consent to 12 to get the vaccine without parental consent. My goodness, are we going to send Mr. Gordon to Sacramento? We better not, because there's a whole lot of people in this district to oppose this bill. But they're taking kids to soccer practice, music lessons, helping with homework right now. But we are here to tell you, this is a bad decision, and we don't want you to vote on this tonight. There's no hurry. You know, when I was on the city council, Governor Schwarzenegger wanted to sell the fairgrounds. And we found out about it, kind of, it was a secret. And we didn't hire a lobbyist. I went up there myself, twice, with Mayor and Katrina. And guess what? We didn't sell the fairgrounds. We won. And it's the same thing. You need to go, Madam President. You need to go to Sacramento and represent us on these bills. You can do it. We do not need a $4,000-a-month attorney. You can pay me $100 a day, and I'll do it. Okay? And you know I can. In fact, I made calls to all the subcommittee members this morning on 1993 and left messages at 8:30 this morning because I didn't, if this bill passes, I will lose my job at College Hospital. I test twice a week, and I don't mind doing that. But if College Hospital forces me to take the vaccine, I won't do it because I have issues. I've had cancer, you all know that. But please don't make this decision. We don't need to do it. There's no hurry to hire a person for $4,000 a month for the job that you should be doing and advocating for the people and get out there in the community. Kevin was president of, or he was the director of CSBA when I was there. He's very entrenched in Sacramento. We do not need his voice in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're done. There's only five. We have five? Yeah, we have five. So we're doing items? Just for clarification, we're doing items on the item itself or additional comments? Okay. So those were just consent calendar. All right. I'm going to move to have a motion to have the approval of the consent calendar.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, so I would like to address, however briefly, item 18E1, because there is commentary on that. I guess I can speak, and if anyone else has comments, they can reply. I think that there's maybe a misperception that lobbyist is a person who speaks on their own behalf and that somehow a single school board member has more influence than somebody who knows directly who to call. I know that many of us have personally called, advocated, been to many of our local representatives during legislative action. And there is something about the ability to express how a district is feeling, especially a basic aid district like ours, which is subject to different kinds of funding, to have somebody to be able to call. A perfect example is our Universal TK, which we will be forced to implement, and we do not have the funding to do so. A lobbyist is somebody who can call a legislator and say, look, we don't have the funding to employ this mandate that you've required us to do, and it will cost us $15 million. It will come out of every general education pocket to fund this new classroom. I know that along, myself, along with many other school board members have met with our representatives to make the case for that. A lobbyist is somebody that you can call and say, this is where we need help. And they can make that phone call and actually be connected, where many times us, even as school board members and elected officials, are sent to the email-and-answering machine box. So I think the purpose of a lobbyist is perhaps misunderstood and definitely can be used incorrectly. I know the intent in our district is where we have issues that specifically affect us as a basic aid school district. And otherwise, those issues may fall on deaf ears with our local legislators, who do not understand necessarily how all of our funding comes directly from our taxes and not from the state. That voice is very helpful to make that case in many sorts of bills. In regards to those other bills that come through, I know that many of us have individually been on the phone, but every little bit helps. And a lobbyist is under our employ to make the case that we ask them to make. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Trustee Yelsey?
Yes, thank you. I agree with what President Barto said. And we have had, this is not new to us, to having had a lobbyist. We have had lobbyists in the past, and we direct them what we want them to accomplish on our behalf. But I also want to just ask, since this is under the superintendent's list, Dr. Smith, would you like to comment on this item, since it is under your purview?
Oh, I was going to let the other trustees first unless because we have a few comments.
There's more lights.
I know, I know, but.
You're called. Do you want to take comments? Do you want me to respond to that? Sure. I think the first thing is, you know, I would be concerned about conflict of interest. I think that's a fair question. I know probably every major education lobbyist in California and have no conflicts with any of them. Haven't been paid by, work for, none of my relatives work for. There are no interests there. That I know people, doesn't a conflict make? What it does, though, is gives you a unique perspective. And what I would hope that this community would appreciate is a unique perspective. And what I would hope that this community would appreciate is a unique perspective and a peek into who moves the needle there. And I can tell you without question, there is no more influential law firm. And I think Kevin working at CSBA helped that. But there are others, Jack O'Connell, LiAngela Reed, Barrett Snyder, et cetera, et cetera. They've got a bench deep and influential, and they work for you. And as one of the community members stated, you work for them. So you hear their interests. They regularly come and share their interests with us. And when you've heard from them what this community wants, then you'll direct capital advisors to act. And, you know, there are lots of things folks can do. I've been in that building, right? And the calls, the letters, the resolutions. But what, what really matters is having relationships in that building, to say, "Do you know that this is an unfunded mandate, and it's discriminatory to make Newport Mesa Unified implement a new grade level with no funding, because you just think we are something that we're not?" For example, issues around the vaccine mandate. I've heard folks at this dais have concerns with that. And capital advisors would be able to take that forward on your behalf and amplify these voices. For me, having worked at that level, this is a bargain for what you can accomplish on behalf of eighteen thousand kids. But that's, oh, as far as the bid process goes, it doesn't qualify for bids. Contracts aside, we don't have to go through the bid process. But, but that's a technical thing, and Mr. Dunlap and I, we can talk about that. But certainly no conflicts. And I couldn't think of a better firm to represent our students. And if my kids were in this district, I'd be pushing hard for this one.
Thank you. I have trustee Wiegand, oh, trustee Yelsey, okay. Trustee Wiegand, and then trustee Ursaylu.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, when we talk about lobbyists, they, they take what we want, and I think everyone describes it here, what the community wants, right? I hear you guys. You guys have had a clear line to me and the people up here on the board. And we take and we hear and we push, believe me, your, your voices. And now we have a voice that's going to be up in Sacramento that can take that, your concerns about all these bills that are coming up, which I have the same concerns. And we can tell, we could take that and, and talk to these ledge, these assembly members or these state senators that we don't normally get to talk to here. We have two people that we can talk to in our, in our area. But when they're up there in Sacramento, they have everyone that they can get to. And that is the most important thing. And they're more likely to take their calls than they are to take our calls. And we will, and I would like to see us have a discussion, where we do discuss, out in the open, the bills that are coming out and seeing what the capital groups, telling them how to, how to advocate for us. So just to let you know that we, they will advocate for the way that we want them to advocate. Additionally, you know, having them maybe have some more Democrats on their board than Republicans in their, in their company, you know, this state is, obviously, has a super majority. And sometimes, someone else might not be able to get to that person. However, having people on both sides of the aisle or having someone that knows and can sit down with someone that is maybe on their side but advocate for a position that we have, say, as a more conservative district, is very influential. It's very influential. And so I just wanted to let you know, I know that you guys are angry, but they will take the way that we want them to discuss and things that we feel, and they will advocate for, for us up in Sacramento.
Trustee Ursaylu?
No, I think, thank you. I think everything has been said, but I just want to second what Dr. Smith said. You know, I, in the past, have been a lobbyist, and Sacramento's a very small place, and capital advisors gets work done. And we want work done for this district for many reasons. There's budget fund, there's different, so many different pockets of money that keep the education system running the way we want it. And these lobbyists understand how to get those dollars into our district when we need them. And so from my vantage point, it's, it's just a win. And to Dr. Smith's point, it's a bargain also. And I think, you know, to many of your points, that, you know, we up here should be doing that work. And I can tell you that many up here are doing that work. They're on Zoom calls with different committees, education committee members and things like that. You know, and we're doing that with our, what is it, four hundred dollar stipend, five hundred dollar stipend, and our full-time jobs and raising our families. So with that, this is why a lobbyist is functional, because this is not our full-time job. It's the lobbyist's full-time job to look out for our interests, and we help wherever we can. So, well, that's all my two cents.
Thank you. No additional comments? All right. So it's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call vote, please? Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Ursaylu?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we moved on to number nineteen, Public Hearing Action Calendar.
Thank you. So tonight, we bring before you four agenda items that are packaged together, which begin the negotiations for a successor agreement with CSCA. It starts with a public hearing on the CSCA initial proposals, followed by the board. We ask that you accept their proposal. And then mirroring that process is having a public hearing on the district's initial proposal and asking the board to approve our initial proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the public hearing is now open at seven thirteen PM. There were no speaker cards submitted for comment. The public hearing is now closed at seven fourteen PM. All right, and now we move to receive the California School Employees Association, chapter number eighteen, Initial Proposal for Successor Agreement to the Newport Mesa Unified School District for Negotiations Commencing. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Matoye, seconded by trustee Anderson. May I have a roll call vote? Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Ursaylu?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Move to Public Hearing of the Newport Mesa Unified School District's Initial Proposal for Successor Agreement to the California School Employees Association, chapter number eighteen, for Negotiations Commencing 2022. The public hearing is now open at seven fifteen PM. There were no speaker cards submitted for comment. The public hearing is now closed at seven fifteen PM.
It looks like we took a minute on the other one and didn't take a minute on this one, but, oh, well.
All right. Nineteen D, Approve Newport Mesa Unified School District Initial Proposal for Successor Agreement to the California School Employees Association, chapter number eighteen, for Negotiations Commencing 2022. May I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Yelsey and seconded by trustee Crane. Roll call vote? Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Ursaylu?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we move to Discussion Action Calendar. And twenty A, Approve April as Kindness Month. So I am one speaking on this topic, and the cities of Newport Beach and Costa Mesa have adopted April as kindness month. So we are doing the same. I believe there's, the resolution's a little different, but ours is a kindness month. Because I think in regards to what we're seeing in the world today, this is not a bad choice. We have several other months dedicated to many projects. But I have seen many of these kindness projects in our elementary schools, in my students' elementary schools, and it's had a good impact on students when they're having a bad day. So however, school sites choose to implement that is up to them. But I think it's a good reminder for the month and for the district. No comments? All right, so then I'm going to ask for a motion.
I move that we approve April's kindness month.
Second.
All right, so it's been moved by trustee Yelsey and seconded by trustee Wiegand. Roll call vote? Student Board Member Nicole McMillan?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Ursaylu?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
I just want to say, one of the things that I hear most from parents and from teachers coming back from COVID is bullying, is just rampant on some of our campuses. So I think one of the things that we saw just kind of across the country was a lot of unkindness and incivility. And so I'm really proud of the way that this board operates now. But I also just am really concerned about a lot of the students in our classrooms, because it, there's just a constant issue with this. So we really wanted to highlight something. So every teacher, they can, they can do a kindness activity every day. They can do something as a school. And as we continue this, we can do things, you know, as an entire district. So I just, I think this is really important and timely.
Thank you. All right, we move to twenty B, Consideration of Alternate Site for the Proposed Location of the New Estancia High School Theater Project and Provide Public Notice for Community Input. We have two comments. Oh, I apologize. Sorry, we have nine comments, so we're gonna give everyone two minutes each. That way, everyone gets the opportunity to speak. So we will start with Taylor Nash.
Hello, my name is Taylor Nash, and I'm a current sophomore attending Estancia High School. I'm speaking here today as a student who is part of the group representing Estancia's drama program to discuss the location of a new theater. Many have expressed their opinions with building over the senior lawn to create the new theater. And while these are all valid concerns, I'd like to counter these points as well, bring in points of my own. My understanding of the problem is that those who do not want the senior lawn to be built over argue that it is the only place on campus that provides a friendly environment. It takes down thirty trees in that area, and it is a place of tradition on campus. To address the first point, as a student at Estancia, I can say that there are many areas on campus that provide the same level of community as our senior lawn. For example, the commons present a friendly area to socialize immediately upon entering campus. And right outside the commons is an area that has lots of plants and space for students to eat at during lunch or talk with friends at any hour. There are other places on campus like this, but the point remains that the senior lawn is not the only area that provides these benefits. Secondly, the construction to create a new theater for our school would require taking down thirty trees in that area. But this fails to mention the forty-plus trees that would be planted with, with the continuation of this project. I'm not happy about unnecessarily getting rid of our trees, but the greenery would, would be replenished, bringing benefits to the ecosystem as well as the students. Finally, the senior lawn is seen as a traditional part of our campus. Many students are being said to show disinterest in placing a new theater on the senior lawn due to how it has been a part of our campus, as shown in the petition. Despite this, I and other drama members witnessed how they would gain support of other students. They'd get pizza for every signature, and when the food was gone, all the students left immediately, showing us that saving the senior lawn was not something that concerned the majority of students who signed that paper. This isn't to claim that there aren't those who truly want to advocate for a different location, but is more to demonstrate that placing a new theater on the senior lawn would not harm the student body as people are stating it would. I am aware that even if construction begins this year, I will probably be already graduated before I could ever perform in a new theater. But it would benefit future drama students and the drama program as a whole. People who are pushing for a different location are delaying the creation of a new theater, and it is unfair for our program to make us wait any longer. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make a comment. I'm, I'm concerned this item specifically is related to providing public notice for community input. If we only have nine speakers, in my opinion, I would like to have them be allowed their three full minutes. I know when I used to come and speak, I timed my comments. So I really, particularly if we have other students, I want to hear their full comments. So is there a way, do we want to like decide amongst ourselves?
Well, if we do that. Can we do two and a half? I mean, because that would fit us all within twenty, I think. I think we're just gonna go with what we've always gone with, which is the two minutes, because I think, I don't think we're gonna have the problem. If, if we do really go over, I think that we're hearing lots of emails. And regarding the community input, I think that that's the purpose of setting this up, and we'll have additional opportunities for people, especially those who aren't here, to give extended input. So not to block anyone's voice, but I, I do think that we'll have time. And it will give us more time to discuss as a board, which I think is important. So next, or, plus, I think it would be unfair to the person who's already spoken.
I know, so, I mean, she was rushing, that's why I don't want to have people have to do that. And I, to me, yeah, like, I think for, I, to, we have been doing three minutes, not two. Like, nine is not, not a lot. So I disagree, but that's my.
Thank you. Next, we have Donna Swift, Mona McLannahan, and then Carlo Opasiano in that order. And then we'll take more after that.
We can listen fast.
I don't have much to say. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Smith, and President Barto. Thank you for having me. I am a former member of California School T-Winkle in Estancia, and both of my two children were part of the drama program. And not only were the AP students, and on the ASB, and the tennis team, and the aquatics team, they multitask in the theater department, help them, just ground them. And they, they were able to multitask and, and do everything and always show up with the powers of Ms. Pauline Meranian. I just want to say how important arts is to just everything. And I think it's what we're speaking to tonight, that it's really, you know, with the whole April kindness month and everything that's going on with everything, it's really important to education. It enhances communication, improve cognition. You know, through the arts, students learn skills like resilience, grit, and not to mention, how about Coach Loft House and the Sailors? That grit, that movement, that growth, and all that will happen at Estancia. When we, we, it's really imperative that we get the theater and not parlay it and move it somewhere now and, and let it, and let it happen, because it's been promised for a very long time, and it needs to happen. So very powerful, very impassioned by it, but we're here to, you know, do whatever we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent and the board. My name is Mona McLannahan, and I come to you tonight maybe with a little bit different perspective. I am a resident of the Mesa Verde community. I tried to attend Adams Elementary School when my daughter was a second grader, leaving our parochial school that could also not meet her needs. Came to the board, the district, and with all of my concerns, I was offered a transfer out. So I'm not here to talk about that per se, but my perspective is, I came back to this district to attend Estancia High School. And what I learned was, as the parent that I am, I had to investigate what this district had in store for my senior, or excuse me, my daughter, who was going to be a freshman in high school. I love the small school environment, the special attention that each and every student gets at Estancia High School. But more importantly, and this is off topic, I want to say kudos to Gabe Delarreal for bringing all the positive academic and other changes to Adams Elementary School. I wouldn't have gone down the hill if he'd been principal then and these changes had been heard and addressed. So that brings me to tonight. Estancia High School, my daughter attended in the year two thousand nine and graduated in the year two thousand thirteen. We are going on nine years of being promised this amazing facility. And I have spoken, is that the timer? And asked all those powers that be along the way. And I'm sad that I'm here tonight, still asking and still waiting.
Thank you. Carlo Opasiano, then Laura Ursini-Meriquin, and then Pauline Meranian.
Thank you, since the time is a little short, I'll just cut right to it. It's Carlo Odichino, my name is always been hard to pronounce. But I'm a nineteen ninety-five graduate of Estancia High School. I went through the theater program. I actually was promised a theater back then, too. So it's, it goes a bit back longer than that. But the reason why I'm here tonight to just, I, since I graduated, I want to kind of share a little bit of my story. I am currently a owner of a small boutique consulting firm that, that works with life sciences companies, working with senior leaders in those companies to become better leaders. And And the thing that we lean on is authenticity, empathy, relationship. And as I look at all of my entire education from kindergarten all the way through graduate school, there's not one more important piece of education that I got than going through a theater program at Estancia High School that taught me those foundational leadership elements. So this is more than just about what somebody might be doing and putting on a play or anything like that. This is foundational life skills. And it meant so much to me going through that program. And Barbara Van Holt, who was the director at that time, passed away last week, and, or actually, a couple of weeks ago now. And I committed myself to carry on her legacy, and so I've come back to Estancia, and I've had the fortunate to direct almost twenty shows there to teach them the same life skills that were given to me. And so I just hope people don't get lost in this sort of tension that comes with kind of fighting over things that kind of seem meaningless when you look at the life of a student. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Smith, thank you so much for having me here. My name is Laura Ursini-Marouquin. I am a 1987 graduate of Estancia High School, and more importantly, a member of Troop, Drama Troop 1224. All three of my children graduated from Estancia High School, two of which were also in Troop 1224. Currently, my daughter is a student teacher in the Drama Program. To say that I am a supporter of this transformative program is an understatement. I serve not only on the Oversight Committee for Measure F, which is the committee that oversees the financial expenditures for this new theater, but I was also invited to be on the Steering Committee of the new theater in 2018. I've spent many hours in meetings discussing the specific theater and music program needs and examining the overarching objectives of the building. During these meetings, two principles focused our discussions. One, the theater at Estancia needs to be on parity with the other facilities in the district. Two, the building is, needs to be a showcase to the community. If we are going to spend twenty-five to thirty-five million dollars, the building needs to be located in the front of the school. During the many months of meetings, only four possible sites were presented to the district, by district staff, as being viable for the building. With the information given to the group and the driving principles in mind, the current site was selected, and the school board at the time approved the site, the site, as they understood and agreed with the driving principles of the Steering Committee. Today, I hear that we may have another location previously not mentioned, may I continue? I have just a minute, previously not presented by the school district, and it may meet our objectives. This is exciting to me. Because the project is in limbo due to the City of Costa Mesa's frivolous lawsuit, I encourage the board to spend the time needed to investigate this, this, this site, understanding the driving principles of the steering committee. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, I'm sorry about that. Next, we have Pauline Meranian, and then Fernando Baranyon, and then Brittany Ebergeny.
As Mrs. Meranian is coming up, thank you, Carlos, for letting us know about Barbara Van Holt. She was one of my favorite teachers at Estancia, and I would like to close the meeting in her honor. I did not know she had passed.
Good evening. I'm the current Drama Teacher at Estancia High School. I had the fortune of being selected by Barbara Van Holt to be her replacement, although no one could ever do that. She was a dear friend of mine and a mentor, and I will miss her dearly. The forum at Estancia High School was named after her the year I took over. It was her deepest desire that the newest facility would also be named after her. I stand here to honor my friend and her legacy, and I'm also deeply moved by the parents who've come out, who are former booster parents, presidents, treasurers, current students, my student teacher, who was a student of mine, Carlo Odichino, who was a student of Barbara's, Laura, who was a student of Barbara's, Fernando, who was a student of mine. We deserve a theater. In 1996, when I was hired, I was told we were going to have a new theater. I sat in this very room under the leadership of Dr. Barbeau and looked at plans for a new theater. That was twenty-six years ago. I may retire before a new theater is ever built, and that's okay. I want the new Drama Teacher to have a beautiful facility. I want the school to have a beautiful facility. I want it to be the crown of Costa Mesa. This theater has done tremendous, tremendous things for the people who've worked in it, myself included. It's changed lives, myself included. I know we've talked a lot about trees. I said it a couple of years ago. Yes, trees can grow, but students need to grow more.
Thank you. Next, here, Fernando Baranyon.
Hello, members of the Newport Mesa Unified School District. My name is Fernando Baranyon, and I am a current junior at Estancia High School. And today, I am here because I want to bring awareness from a student's perspective on the issue regarding the new theater placement at Estancia High School. Throughout my three years in high school, I've been involved in student government, a member of several clubs, including Leo's, Best Buddies, ARC, and Women's Empowerment Club. I have also been an individual part of Estancia Drama and Drama Production Program. Estancia has been among a few of the Newport Mesa schools that haven't had a new theater. I think it is a great idea that we will finally get one after so long, but the location of where it is going to be planned to be placed isn't ideally what many of us students would like. Removing the trees that so many students of all grade levels go in order to communicate and interact with one another wouldn't be a good idea. This place holds so much value and meaning as these trees were planted by previous generations of Estancia graduates. It wouldn't be fair to previous generations of Estancia graduates to see what they once planted as a means of remembrance to be demolished. Human interactions have been made throughout these past years, and to place a new theater in the same location would take up a portion of what's left of our nature and school. I know that there are other locations at our school that have some form of nature, but the magnitude of the trees, like the meaning of that, it holds dearly to so many of the previous Estancia graduates. And even though we've had no mask mandate at school and students are able to eat inside, students are still continuing to attend and eat at that location and interact with one another. And that tells you, that tells you one thing, that, that no matter what happens, no matter, because of the pandemic, we are still out there, and we are still communicating with each other. And I've been out there because, for me, I've been, I've been a person who's been stressed a lot, and that place holds meaning to me because I am able to be free. And, and also, the location of it is very sacred, like I mentioned before, and I honestly don't think that this would be a great place to put it. Thank you.
Thank you, Fernando. Next, we have Brittany Ebergeny, and then Wendy Lee.
I will try to be as fast as possible. Good afternoon, trustees, superintendent, members of the public. As a former student board member myself, I know just how important it is to advocate for what I believe in and stand up for the community that has given me so much. I was here two months ago, and I am here today to discuss a major injustice that is pending at Estancia High School, my alma mater. Destroying the nature that so eloquently encompasses the front of the school and has always provided the students with a safe, free community space is not only dangerous, but outright unethical. Although I am in support of the theater community, and I think a theater is a good idea, I don't believe that the location is right for so many reasons. The senior lawn is a place where students congregate in an open, safe area with staff supervision, a luxury that cannot be possible under the public park next door, Fairview. These kids are safer in the senior lawn, and demolishing the safe space would be on your conscience. Furthermore, the nature located at the front of the campus provides fresh, clean air, thanks to the abundance of trees for the Eagles, something no addition of concrete can provide. What my concern is how, as a district, we've come to add machines into our classrooms to better the air quality, yet make no hesitation in approving destroying literal decades-old trees on school grounds, an act of hypocrisy one cannot ignore. Furthermore, the theater location presents a lot of traffic congestion, which would severely affect the entrance of the Estancia to the left side, a side, mind you, that especially a lot of minority students live on every single day. A clogged traffic addition would put these kids in harm's way, a danger that you know to be true and you are allowing. Think about the kids, the students of Estancia. A new theater is a good idea, but not in that place. Now, I understand that this decision may be easy for you, a simple yes and move on, but the ability to say yes and move on is a privilege you possess, being an elected official in an office, not having experienced the effects of your decisions every single day. That's what these kids have to do, because it will be them that suffers, not you. They have to face the consequences, mental, emotional, and safety, every single day, so you don't have to. Move it somewhere else, there's so much concrete already. Care about these kids, be the adult they so depend you to be. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brittany. Next, we have Wendy Lee.
I won't say too much, but I love the diversity of opinion. I have been a West Side resident for fifty years, so at least, you know, once or twice a week, I drive down Placentia. And when we heard about the removal of the trees, a lot of us on the West Side particularly, thanks to Ms. Anderson, we, you know, we were concerned, because it was not a transparent process to vet this new auditorium or new theater on that particular site. And I know there was a committee, but the board, the previous board, did not do a very good job of informing the public at large, which means taxpayers, about this design that was going to take down these trees. So my suggestion is that, as you see, that parents are awake and addressing the school board, I've been doing it since the mid-eighties, but we've got a lot more people now, that it's important for you on everything to be transparent and to know that we are engaged, and we want to see you engage us with, you know, a robust forum about where the theater should be held. We, Estancia have gone to many performances. God bless Barbara Van Holt, just a wonderful person who did so much for the Drama Department and the kids that were part of that. So make it, I don't know what you have in mind, but do a little better than you have in the past as far as engaging the public, whether it's, you know, meetings at different places, and something more than surveys, but get, we're out there. So to find us and let us weigh in on where you're going to put it, but not on where the trees are. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to get a motion, and then I guess we can discuss. So I may have a motion to approve 20B.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Trustee Yelsey.
Am I in line?
Your light was on, but it was behind a bottle, so you're good.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank all the speakers that came out. Many of you, I think I saw here when I was first on the board as parents, as advocates for Estancia High School, for Adams High School. Ms. McClanahan, I remember being in a meeting with you, with Gabe De La Real, at Adams when we started the Modern Scholars Program. So I know how passionate all of you are about the Estancia Zone area. And I know how passionate many of the alumni who are here have spoken, as well as the current students. And we all know, I think, the importance of theater. We all want to build a theater at Estancia. There's no doubt about that. I, I was part of the board that approved this almost two years ago, and I've been part of the conversation for ten years while we've been waiting to build this, and we've wanted to build this. When we approved this with our previous board, and a couple of us are current members who were here at the time, but when we approved this, unfortunately, we did not have all the information that we needed in terms of being accurate information. And in the past few months, we have received some information that is more accurate, that we didn't know about. And I am disappointed in that, and I wish it hadn't happened, but it did, which gives us the opening, and as someone mentioned, we have, there's a lawsuit with the city, so that's very public knowledge. We couldn't start tomorrow anyway, and while we, since, with this new information and while we are waiting, I think we should go out and talk to the community again, even though we did a lot of community input back at the time. We can ask a question, we can have meetings and recommend twenty different times for people to show up, and if they don't show up, we can't talk about an issue. And this happens with everything. We, you know, parents quite often will say, well, I didn't hear about this. Well, we sent out notices five times, we posted signs, and people hear what they want to hear when they have an issue with something, then they'll say, aha, I have an awareness now, I'll show up. So we did do that, but I have no problem with going back and adding some community input, because we are waiting at this point, and we also, all of us, all seven of us, have new information we can look at. So we will build a theater. We have the option now of looking at some alternative locations, which I think we should do and get community input, but you can rest assured that we will, in the end, approve a theater at Estancia, and it will be equal to any other theater we have in the district. We are not going to cut back on things in any way. So we want that to be the shining star of the Estancia Zone. And we know the history of theater at Estancia. I mean, I've been going to performances there for almost sixteen years that I've been on the board. We know how great that program is, it is, and we want it to continue to grow, so.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Sorry, Trustee Anderson, I'm going to move my laptop because I cannot see the full screen. All right, so, thank you, Charlene. It's Trustee Anderson, then Trustee Crane, then Trustee Ursaylu.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for that. I think that was really clarifying. I think there's been a lot of confusion and misassumptions, and I think we have a unique opportunity to kind of reevaluate. And I just wanted to ask that this time when we do community input, I would ask that we go to the students and make sure that we have a student forum, because that did not happen last time. And a lot of the students that I spoke to had no idea that this theater was happening, and a lot of them were very happy, similar to Fernando, he's in the Drama Program, but did not know that it was happening. And I think this is something that we can really highlight as a win, like, we're going to have this awesome theater, and thankfully, you know, we're going to be able to also save the green space, hopefully, if we vote that way. So I just, I'm just thankful for all the people that I have personally heard from. I've heard from people I haven't heard from in twenty-five years. And I was at Estancia in ninety-six, and I remember a lot of the promises we got about our campus that never came to fruition, and it's really frustrating. So hopefully, with this new location, it actually will be a faster process than if we go with what we had. So I just, I'm glad that we're able to have this conversation and follow our board policy and make sure that we're pushing all of this information out to the community in more ways than we have in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Crane, and then Trustee Ursaylu.
Yes, first, I want to thank all the speakers that stepped up to the podium and shared their insight and their experiences, and especially to the students who come up here. It's daunting to be up on the podium, and so thank you for being here. Also, Taylor Nash, we saw your play, the soccer one. You had a very large, wait, stand up if you were in that play, because I recognize some of your faces.
Yeah, stand up if you were in the play.
That was absolutely, your dialogue was absolutely amazing, and I don't know how you memorize all these lines for like an hour and fifteen minutes, just pure dialogue, amazing. you memorize all these lines for like an hour and 15 minutes, just pure dialogue, amazing. So I know there's grit, someone mentioned grit, and let's make it the theme of the night, grit. But most of all, as a governing board, you know, we want to be known for transparency, authenticity, and a board that reaches out to the community. And when new information comes up, we need to reconsider, absolutely. So I'm in favor of definitely having discourse, more community engagement, students, parents, staff, et cetera. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Trustee Ursaylu, and then trustee Matoye.
Thank you, and thank you, ditto to trustee Crane. Thank you for everyone who comes and speaks up, and I apologize, ladies, I didn't get to see your play, but I did bring you pizza one night at practice, so I hope that covers it. But as I believe former President Yelsey just said it so eloquently, you know, you know more, you know better, and then you do better. So when there's new information, you can shift your directions and your choice matrix, because you just simply know different things that you didn't know before, and now you know them, it's on you to act on that information to the best of your ability. So I just thank everybody for being engaged in the process, and to know that it's not a choice between trees or kids. It's never been trees or kids. Everyone up here, as has been said many times, wants the theater, wants the best theater over at Estancia. Estancia is the zone that I represent, I want a good theater there. But seeing the mental health implications of removing a green shaded area that I see every day hundreds of students using and relaxing under, that was a cost, you know, benefit analysis that I err on the side of, us reconsidering some other locations and looking really critically at how that space can be protected for kids. So thank you, everybody, for engaging with us.
I, too, was on the previous board that we passed this. Mrs. Yelsey and I have been really struggling, and I am so frustrated that it has taken this long to build the theater. But the reason it's taking this long is out of my control. And because of that, we're stuck with a time gap that we're stuck. And if we can use that time to make better decisions, to make, to make the greens be green somewhere, we're not saying where, what we're going to do. What we're saying is, we're stuck in this time block, but during this time block, we've received way more information than we ever did. We can make a better decision, we can go out to the community. One of the things this board has strived to improve is how we do our community outreach. I know we did community outreach the last time, I know we did. So I don't want to put it on the old committee that, "Well, we didn't do community outreach," because we did, but it didn't ring the bells that it did now. So if we've got this block of time that we can use, rather than just sit and wait for some decision or some action, then let's use that time wisely. I want, I would like, I would like to be in the theater, I would like to go to the theater and see the Estancia program. It's been one of the best in our district for an awfully long time. And once, I am a firm believer, if you build it, they will come, that program will grow. Every theater we have built has grown after the building was there. So I know that that will happen. It's frustrating, but what the proposal said is, "Consideration of an alternate site for the proposed location of the Estancia School Theater and provide public notice for the community input." None of that seems bad, since we're stuck anyway. So I make, I move. Oh, it's been moved and seconded, it's so good.
It's, we're just discussing.
We're discussing. Discussion, action, got it.
Trustee Ursaylu.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add one more thing that I forgot. For those of you that are here, that are engaged in theater, I know my daughter was in the plays at California Elementary, and I just want to let everyone here know, if you don't know already, but T-Winkle is finally committed to next year there being drama, either after school or during school, but there will be drama next year. So we are committed deeply to building that true pipeline of drama from the California and Victoria and Adams up to T-Winkle and up through Estancia. So please know that this board is dedicated to that, and that we have made that happen, along with the brazen staff that has really pushed these things forward to get drama at T-Winkle for the next year. So know that that's only going to help propel when there is a new theater at Estancia.
And then I'd just like to thank everyone who came to express their opinions and their diversity of opinions, and I think that one thing that COVID really highlighted, not that it wasn't in use before, was just the appreciation of our green space and the mental health benefits of being outdoors. And I think that's something that kind of came to a forefront. We reached a spot where we couldn't move forward, and we needed to reevaluate our choices, and I appreciate the courage of our staff and of our board to bring forth new ideas and new thinking, and look at the available options and say, you know, did we truly receive all the information we needed in the most transparent way the first go around? And if not, how can we do better, and how can we work with what we have to make the best solution for our community and for Estancia in valuing the Estancia School and Zone as a whole?
And I would just like to support you. Thanked everyone for coming out. I know a lot of you were out to speak to us before at the board meeting that we got canceled, right in the middle of people speaking. So thank you, thank you for coming back again to speak to us.
Thank you. All right, thank you, then we'll go to roll call vote. Student Board Member Nicole McMillan?
Yes.
Trustee Bartow?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Ursaylu?
Yes.
Trustee Wygant?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
All right, moving on to 20C, first reading and adoption of modifications to board policy.
Just, did you make up? No, we don't have them, so we have to open up. Is it up, will it be on the screen? Can it be on the screen? That's what it also usually does. Hmm? That's okay, you. Okay.
The last time we did it, we had just had the group represent the edits that they had made, and they weren't up there on the screen, because we've done it once with this new process, and the committee just said, "Here's what we discussed, here are the edits we made."
But I'm just getting them out of my bag.
Okay.
So then, we'll have the edit committee, I guess, they'd like to present.
Yes, we'll offer, is this also on 20C? If you guys don't have it, I've got my copy with me. I just need to know.
All right, then we'll have our speakers speak. We have first Danielle M., and then Brian Dozer.
I just thought it was very interesting, and whether or not, maybe I'm just up here saying this to make other people aware, who might be watching, who might not have looked into all the little details of all of the changes being made. But the policy changes in regards to infectious diseases was interesting, and the changes are talking about age-appropriate information, about the nature and symptoms of communicable diseases, transmission. These are going to be given in health class, maybe, I'm not sure how this is going to be put out there to students. It also mentions, oh, let's see. Prevention, mitigation, education, communication, and training of students and staff. So I'm just confused as to where that happens, if that's in a quote-unquote "health" class, and what kind of diseases. And most importantly, in the blue, in one of the changes, it says, "If the local health officer notifies the district of an outbreak of a communicable disease, or the imminent and proximate threat of a communicable disease outbreak or epidemic that threatens the public's health, the district shall take any action deemed necessary to control the spread of the disease." What does "any" mean? Can we get a definition of "any"? What kind of action does "any" include? That is so broad. I mean, are you talking about keeping kids home from school? Are you talking about keeping certain kids home from school? Are you talking about testing? I mean, what is "any"? That is, that encompasses way too much. Students and staff shall be taught age-appropriate ways to observe universal precautions in order to prevent exposure of blood-borne pathogens or other body fluids to prevent the spread of infectious disease. What are we talking about there? Like condoms, body fluids? Or, I mean, it's very general, and it doesn't say, we're getting rid of a lot, and compacting it down, so I'm just, define "any," I guess, and what kind of training are we talking about, and where is this supposedly taking place?
Thank you.
I'd like to answer the "any" question, if you'd like. "Any" was one of my questions.
Well, let's wait till we get to, yeah, because we have two comments. Yeah, let's wait till we get to our discussion, please.
Good evening, President Bartow, board members, and Dr. Smith. I apologize, I filled out for the non-agendized items to just introduce myself, so I don't know that it's appropriate that I be up here at this time, so.
Well, thank you for coming up.
Okay.
Why don't we, during the board informal reports, we talk about ROP?
Wonderful.
All right, thank you so much. All right, so I believe I need a motion in a second to begin our discussion, so may I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. So may I ask the policy edit team to explain?
Ms. Anderson, that was yours.
Can you first identify who the three are?
Yes, yes, thank you.
I am, trustee Matoye.
Our names aren't on there, that's okay. I had a question as well about "any," "any" can mean no action. So it can, like, one of the things that we wanted to be really clear was that we can take any information from public agencies, and we can choose to act on it, and we can also, our action can be that we don't, we choose to not move forward. So it's, "any" action is vague, and the fact that it lets us have more leeway. So a board policy is something that we try to make them as broad as possible, and then the AR, the administrative regulation, that follow them are the more nuanced information and components. And this also, too, directly follows the Health and Safety Code, so some of the items that are part of this, and as well as the administering medicines, some of them are ed codes, some of them are governmental codes, and some are health and safety codes. So we have to comply with them in some way. But one of, yeah, so I just wanted to clarify what "any" means, because that was one of my questions, too.
My question is how we, I noticed there are a lot in Health and Safety Code, is it because, and I'm not asking a rhetorical question, I actually don't know, is it in this specific case, because the Health and Safety Code was updated, that we're taking this action to our board policy? Was that how this came about?
So if I can jump in here?
Yes.
Thank you. It wasn't because of necessarily any updates. The last time this board policy had been updated was 2009, and I gave direction to my staff to look through the policies and start to kind of bring them forward. So over the course of the next few months, you're going to see a lot from special ed, health services, and student services, just in terms of being able to update our policies moving forward. So all of these, excuse me, are the latest updates that we've gotten on that information, but it wasn't, it didn't trigger us to have to, oh, my time is up. It didn't trigger us to have to make those changes.
This is just the TERF one, so it's just one of them.
Okay. Were there any other discussions on additional policies I'd like to?
I have a policy on 1330 on BP. Can I comment now? Okay.
This is just a general discussion.
Yeah, okay, "School Facilities for Polling Places," first paragraph.
I had discussions on that.
Did you?
Yes.
Okay, I have a question. Okay, it had to do with the clause, one second. First paragraph. It had to do with storage facilities, as being a storage facility. Oh, here it is. "The board may authorize the use of school buildings as polling places on any election day, and may also authorize the use of school buildings without cost for the storage of voting machines and other vote-tabulating devices." So I didn't, I didn't know that we're responsible for storing machines that, you know, and, can I expand on that?
Yes. I can, who said yes?
Oh.
Good, go for it.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, trustee, I'm sorry.
No, please.
We had a lengthy discussion regarding this, and just know that if a school district is going to be used, or a school site facility is going to be used for a polling place, that there is going to be basically set up and tear down. So it's not like we're a storage facility for a long-term commitment to voting machines and/or anything else that comes from the voter, the registrar's office. But if we do or were to agree to be a polling place, we would have to house those items for a temporary amount of time, which means our agreement would include a safe, secure location for those select items.
They get dropped off X number of days before the election. We have to make sure they're safe. Ninety percent of the time, it's the multipurpose room, but then they get stored back where the music chairs and the music tables are, so it can be a locked door. But that happens a lot.
Well, because I, you know, with the issue of election integrity these days and everything, I don't think the district needs to be involved in any type of machine that we would have to defend the safety of. Does that make sense?
It does, and that is something that we don't have to necessarily do, and we had a lengthy discussion about that in the group, discussing the fact that we don't have to sign up to be a polling place, and that we haven't done that in quite some time, just because in a school district, it's also a challenge, because our students are typically in session on election days, and so it becomes problematic to be able to secure, to secure students away from the voting centers. But however, you know, if that was something that the district wanted to move forward with, we wanted to become a polling place, we would have to look at that.
Okay, I think it's wonderful when schools host polling places, because it's a great lesson in civic engagement, and I love seeing the kids be involved, saying, "Oh, what's going on?" That's kind of their first curiosity about voting, but I was just worried about the storage part of things, so, just so we're sensitive to that.
Thank you. Thank you. Trustee Wygant.
I just wanted to say to the committee, thank you for adding a blurb in here about the athletic feeder programs. I know we've had some community engagement about that, and their concern about utilizing our facilities, and we have some beautiful facilities that have been built recently that are great for our feeder programs to be used. So thank you for adding that. It's one step forward to keeping our, letting our schools be used by the public more often. So thank you.
Trustee Crane.
I also wanted to thank you for updating the costs, the fee, the fee schedule for the fields, because I know that, when we had, we were having a discussion a few months back, I do know that other cities charge way more, and we're under value, I mean, we're under market, we need to, so I'm glad that we are now keeping, you know, updating our fees. Thank you.
And in addition to being able to support our community, we are also striving to make sure that we maintain our own fields for our students, which is the primary purpose of building the fields. So we have to find a way to share and keep everything still wonderful for 10 years.
Lance Bignick did most of the work on this policy, so we're very pleased to be able to bring this forward to you tonight, and because I have the microphone in front of me, I'm answering the questions, but he's out in the audience to make sure I don't make any mistakes. Thank you, Lance. Are there any other comments about any other policies? Otherwise, I'd like to go back to 5142, 22, the infectious diseases one. I would like to propose that we revisit this one. There's a few typos, but also I think there's a couple areas in which, regardless of politics, we might be exposing ourselves to some violations. I think we've never been in a pandemic before. And I think a lot of this was written when we had routine diseases. And I'm looking, you know, and I see, I just see a lot of things that go to flus and colds. And the purpose of this was, you know, teaching things like washing hands, things like that that are age appropriate, and then, you know, different things for high school. I do think that we should take a look at that if the local health officer notifies the district of an outbreak, because I think, in addition to the Health and Safety Code, we need to build in some provisions for us. And so I'd love to just talk either with our legal counsel or with other school districts for best practices, because the other ones are a little more routine in nature and they're routine updates. This one, I just see a couple things that, because we are, TERF and things like that don't, we can enforce those differently with our administrative regulations. With this, I see that we have some updates in the way we interact with the Health Department, that we should probably just revisit this a couple times. So I'd love to bring it to a second reading or take a review of it. That would be my preference.
Well, I believe this is just the first reading. We're not approving it.
Yes.
You do, as a matter of practice, when you've had your, in the past, edit committee, that can count as a first reading. You do have the option with this item to adopt it. But it's very, very practical to bring it back if after that edit and then your consideration, you want to visit it again. So you do have the option to do it, but you also, it's very appropriate to bring it back.
I agree with trustee Barto, actually on both of these. I would like to just digest it a little bit and bring it back for a final read and a second read and approval, for both of them, actually.
Which school? B 514122. So the one that really stuck out to me, and there's other things, but the students with infectious diseases, where the ones where we're talking about on-campus instruction and we're talking about bloodborne pathogens, I just want to make sure that, A, we're in accordance with any laws and rules in terms of how we can educate students or include or exclude. All of that's recently changed. I think that that's, before we get ourselves in a situation where we have an unenforceable board policy, it'd be worthwhile to review this one. And the other ones look fine, I don't have any changes for the other ones.
Can I have a point of clarification? On the agenda, there is three attachments, and I only see here printed out in front of us, two.
Yes, do you have the agenda online in front of you?
Yeah.
So it's the very, it's 20.
It's administering medication. Okay, but then there's the infectious disease review as well.
That's 22. Medications is 21, and then 1330 is 22.
I should clarify, 514122 is infectious diseases and 514122 is the administering medication and monitoring health conditions. Both are regarding health. I was speaking regarding 514122.
Okay, thank you. I am in agreement to 5141.22 to, let's just, you know, good first reading, let's go through it and look it over again and make some comments and, you know, consult legal and consult, see what other districts are doing as well.
Trustee Metoyer.
My suggestion is we take these one at a time.
That sounds great.
And just decide, is this a one reading and we pass it? Is this not, because that way we can, yeah, maybe be home before nine.
Sounds good. Lose my streak. Take too long tonight.
It's not me.
Not so sure.
No.
Would you like me to make a motion to approve the board policy 1330?
So we'll need to.
Or how do you want to do it?
We'll do them in order.
So we have the first reading and adoption of modifications to board policy. We have a motion in a second, which means we need to let that, we need to create a subsequent motion? I always do this incorrectly.
Let it die, no one votes in favor of it.
Okay, all right, so then we'll do, yeah, we'll have to do roll call vote for this one. And if it will not pass, we'll do a second one.
A question, are we gonna, do we have to lump them all together or can we separate them?
The current motion is all them together. And so if you want to separate them.
Got it, we do it again.
Let the motion die with no support.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's my clarification, because you do need to still do the roll call vote and that needs to die. Thank you. All right, so roll call vote.
Student board member Nicole McMillan?
No.
Trustee Barto?
No.
Trustee Metoyer?
No.
Trustee Crane?
No.
Trustee Anderson?
No.
Trustee Arsoilo?
No.
Trustee Wegand?
No.
Trustee Yelsey?
No.
And trustee Crane, would you like to propose an alternate motion?
I would like to move to adopt board policy 1330 as edited from our edit committee.
As a first reading.
And waive the second reading.
Then I have a comment after there's a second.
Second.
Okay, what I would like to know is, was this revision passed through the principals at the schools? Because I know I wanted them to be very involved in what was going on here because they are so entwined with our community organization. So I just want to make sure that they are in agreement with this policy before we go to the final approval.
Kirk's shaking, yes.
Yeah, everyone's shaking their heads because Dr. Bauermeister, you know, Dr. Torres, they were very involved with our site principals. Our site principals walked through the recommendation of staff makes recommendation to this group that then make some edits and recommendations to you. They were very supportive of this. And moreover, Josh was in communication, keeping people apprised of where we were. So there were no surprises in the community. So it was well received by them, moreover communicated broadly with respect to certain zones.
I guess just for next time, because I think we all got this sent to us. So for next time, do we want to only like make the edits in this meeting? Or my understanding was if people had questions, they would send Wes, Dr. Smith, the comments, and then we would make edits and talk about it today, just so we save time.
I think what we need to do is get our procedures clarified.
I agree, yes.
So that would be, we could send our edits, but this kind of plays to what the, doing the business of the board in public. And so if we have edits that we want to send to you, we can, but we still need to have the discussion.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And there's also a lot of value to community input during public comments that could also affect, you know, our changes. So that's, it's important to also do it in the public.
Trustee Yelsey, your light was on, that was from before. Okay. All right, so it's been moved and seconded, we have a roll call vote.
Student board member Nicole McMillan?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Arsoilo? Trustee Wegand?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Okay, so moving on to, do I have a motion to?
I move that we approve policy number 5141.21, administering medication and monitoring health conditions, and waive the second reading.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
May we have a roll call vote?
Student board member Nicole McMillan?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Wegand?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
So then we would have, may I have a motion to approve first reading of board policy 5141.22 and then review at a second reading?
Sir, you bring it back for a second reading.
I'll bring it back for a second reading.
Did you move it?
Make the motion, yes.
Trustee Anderson moves.
Second.
Trustee Crane. Roll call vote.
Student board member Nicole McMillan?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Wegand?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Between now and the next board meeting, which is when we'll be voting on that, I think we should make notes and jot things down. And if there are certain questions, perhaps we can direct them to Dr. Jacom, because she's our guru for all things health and welfare, anytime. So that way she's prepared with what our concerns are and has the answers for us at the next meeting.
Or you can get it to me.
We should be getting them to Dr. Smith, because that's our procedure. I'm so sorry. I'm here to work for Dr. Jacom.
I think it's always great to have Mary Graska here. She is a fountain of information, so I would love to have her, because I think we have pretty detailed questions and she would know them.
Yeah, there's a lot of, normally not so much specific litigation on these sorts of things until the last couple of years.
Yep.
All right, so moving on to 20D, approve the budget for renovation of NPR stage at East Bluff Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Metoyer. May I have a discussion?
I think Mrs., yeah, it was discussion.
Trustee Yelsey.
I thought other people were discussing first. I am very supportive of this. I'm a little perplexed of why this would be something that would be presented to us on a discussion action item, because it normally is a type of thing that we just routinely approve when we've worked with foundations or school groups that want to fund something at their school. And they've worked with the people in the business area to get it approved. And I understand this is something that will eventually is on the list in terms of priorities to be done, but we have a lot of things on the list and there are priorities. But if a school wants to do it in a timely fashion, they want it sooner, and they have the ability to do this, I think we should always support that. We have foundations or groups or at many of our schools who want to improve the schools, improve their campuses. And I think it's important that we allow them, if they have the means and the resources to do that, to become involved, to keep, because there are kids at a lot of these schools that if we don't allow this type of thing, they will leave our schools. And they'll say, I'm done with public schools, I'm going, I'm taking my child elsewhere. So it doesn't hurt us at all to have our community want to be involved in making, in improving their schools. And I hope we can continue to do that.
Thank you. Trustee Anderson and then trustee Metoyer.
Thank you. I can answer that. I asked to move it to discussion action, because for me, it's something that I don't necessarily feel is a routine item. One of the concerns that I have heard from principals for schools that do not have foundations is a feeling of getting pushed down the line for schools that might have a foundation, because our staff would be the ones that would be fixing this up. So I strongly feel differently, that if the school has the means, then they can have the project. I think particularly one of the schools in my area, Ray Elementary, has a dramatic need for their NPR to be completely renovated and fixed up, and they have been asking for a while. And so I just, I think it would be helpful, and it'll be helpful when we have a facilities master plan, to know what the sequence looks like as to when some of the renovations are happening. But I think, you know, if we're going to go about this where we're functioning with schools that don't have a foundation and those that do, I think for something like this specifically, I think the district should be paying for it. If it's our stage, if there, you know, if there's an ADA compliant ramp, if there's a shaky guardrail, to me, that's on us, that the foundation should not be having to pay for that. We have ample money. And so I think I would just like to see a systematic approach. I know four out of the five NPRs in the zone that I represent are woefully under-resourced, I will put it lightly. And if we're going to go about it this way, you know, I can go to IKEA and ask them to fund it. Do I think that's appropriate? No, I think we need to be working within our system that we have. So I would like to see kind of a new approach. I think it hasn't been looked at in quite a while. We've been doing things one way. So I would like to see projects be approached in a different way with perhaps a different philosophy or the chance to talk about it as a board. I'm 100% in favor of East Bluff specifically having a designated music space. If they do not have that, to me, that's a problem. I think, do they need a portable? Do they, we need to figure something out. To me, that's a bit separate from the NPR. I spoke with the teacher who does music in this site, and the main issue is there's constantly, you know, if there's choir, if there's something going on, and then lunch happens, and there's just a lot of shifting. And so it wasn't necessarily that it's like the worst stage in our district. It's just that there are several kind of underlying factors. So I would just like to see some changes. When she tells me at Adams Elementary, she's nervous to stand on the stage, that's more concerning to me. I think we need to address things by level of either need of repair or a systematic approach. Thank you. I absolutely support this, though. I don't want you, I just, I think we need a new approach.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think it's great that you announced that Ray is in need of some work, because unfortunately, there's probably not a lot of people listening now. I wish there were as many as we used to have two years ago on our meetings. Because there could be, you know, we're looking at community schools and we're looking at community involvement. And there could be some IKEAs or people out there who want to donate money to a school to provide something. So I think it's great that all of us get out in our communities where there may be schools that can't raise the money from parent donations. There may be other groups out there that would help us do some of these things in those places, so.
My comments are, I was principal at East Bluff for six and a half years. They need a new stage. They needed a new stage 12, 20 years ago. It's, it isn't even close to being like a typical elementary multipurpose room stage. So even if music had to be on there, it's just not there. And what's there is definitely ready to be replaced. I, I never want to say no to parents that want to help support their school. It's, every PTA does what they can, everyone does what they have to. We have many funding sources that go to schools that don't have foundations that are, that, so the foundations then pick up the slack. So I have no problem talking about having a study session to look at how we do things, and that's a whole separate issue. But since this is one above the board, I just think that we need to move forward and get it done. And every multipurpose room in the district needs help. They, other than the, other than the three and soon to be four brand-new theaters, they are all hurting. And well, it seems like we could just go in and just fix them, and it's not. It's almost like we might as well just tear them down and rebuild them, because there's so many ADA things from the fact that they were built 57 years ago, so.
I'd like to call for the vote.
Oh, I just wanted to add, I've never been so excited to approve a piece of software on consent calendar ever, as our facility software, because that's going to help with our issue overall of keeping track of where we are and moving forward with things and being able to schedule our very complicated district. So, thank you. All right, so I'm going to call for the roll call vote.
Student board member Nicole McMillan?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes, of course.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Wegand?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
All right, and then moving on to 21, resolution adoption calendar. Adopt resolution number 19-03-22, withdraw from the Alliance of Schools Cooperative Insurance Program ASIP and Declaration of Membership in Southern California Regional Liability Access Fund, SOCal Relief. Mr. Trader.
The district, much like everyone who has homeowner's insurance or car insurance or those kinds of things, we carry property and liability insurance. And that is a primary protection for the district. The district has been a member of ASIP since 1991, and they've been a great partner and it's been a good fit for quite some time. On occasion, though, we shop our services and we look at what the market offers. And in looking what the market offers, we've found a provider that fits our needs. And so you have before you a resolution to move from ASIP to Southern California Relief. And it's been vetted by our Director of Risk Management, Mr. Jonathan Willby. And this is our recommendation to you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, and let me just mention, there is a projected five-year savings of approximately $679,000. There's broader coverage with higher limits and complete access to the Safe Schools trainings.
Thank you.
Jeff, might I add, and if this is inaccurate, please let me know, but there are also because
but there also, because of the extensive coverage this policy would provide, a chance for us to look at other coverage that costs us several hundred thousand dollars a year. So besides the projected savings, the level of coverage here would, not this next year, but in out-years free up even more than the projected $670,000.
Yes, on the excess side, yeah.
And I just want to clarify, because I brought this up in our agenda prep, but this is an agency that you guys have worked with in the past, so we're not moving from the, the known to the unknown for the sake of savings?
That's correct. We use this firm for our workers' comp side.
Thank you. Okay, trustee Anderson and then trustee Yelsey.
Thank you. Yet again, I'm very excited that we finally hired somebody to handle risk management. So thank you. I love seeing a recommendation for something coming from that. I had a question about how this impacts Fund 17, which is currently co-label. I mean, there's a couple of purposes for it, but under the Treasury report and our, and our agenda, it's called the A-Skip Stabilization Fund. So how will it impact Fund 17? Would we just change the name, or?
You know, that's interesting. Yeah, we would change the name, I suppose, because that really has a, an origination from insurance. Sometimes we would get, for example, a rebate. If we had a, a good year in that terms, in, in those terms, we would get a rebate from our insurance company, and that money went to Fund 17 as a stabilization fund in the event that we would have a bad year. So we probably need to rename that.
Will it still be the same, though, with a, a new company? Would that still kind of come up? That would still be in, we would get money back? There would still be money going into that fund for that purpose?
Well, you know, that, that's individual, and that may or may not happen. And it was not a regular thing with A-Skip either. So it could or could not happen depending on how, how, our, our performance.
Thank you. I'll make the motion.
Okay, trustee Yelsey.
I was just going to make a motion. Is that what you were going to do? Go ahead. I, I was just.
So moved.
Second. It's moved by trustee Anderson and seconded by trustee Yelsey. Roll call vote.
Student board member Nicole McMillan?
Yes.
Trustee Bartow?
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Wegand?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Thank you, and moving on to number, item 22 in formal reports.
So no applause in the audience, but tonight I'll be very brief. I told you when I came to this community at, at your direction, and because of my bias that I would be in the community, listening, participating, I spoke at the Wake Up Newport Beach some time ago, and because of that good deed, I was asked to serve on the board, the chamber board for Newport Beach. And so I was able to attend our first meeting and hear about the things going on in the community, and they asked about education. So it's a great chance for us to talk about what we're doing to provide a stable and just amazingly awesome workforce for them. And the quality of our schools helps them do work, and then I can hear what's going on in the business community. So we had our first meeting, and I'll continue to report back if there are specifics that, that affect us. And then lastly, been in classrooms, at schools, think great things, flag decks, performances. I got to go see a rally last week, and it was the first time since the pandemic, almost three years, that CDM had a rally with all four grades in the auditorium. And I got to tell you, I was moved. It was fun and exciting, and, and Mike and his team and the students are amazing. But I was moved, because it really felt like if I hadn't been paying attention for three years, which I have, that I was three years ago at a rally. It felt really, really good. The students were so excited. They were worried the students wouldn't remember how to celebrate their school, their school spirit in a rally. They did. It was awesome. So I just wanted to say, it felt good to be on that campus, to see those students. And again, a lot of campuses, a lot of students learning, a lot of things happening. That really struck me last week, so.
Right, we move to board member reports, committee reports. If, if it's all right with you, I'm going to invite Brian Dozer, the President of Coastline ROP. Thanks for waiting until the end to introduce himself as, as my committee report for Coastline ROP.
Am I on a three-minute time limit? Okay. So, pardon?
Minute and a half.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, President Bartow, board members, and Dr. Smith, thank you very much for welcoming me tonight. My name is Dr. Brian Dozer. I am the new superintendent as of February 1st of Coastline Regional Occupational Program, just right around the corner. And it is my honor to be here and to thank you for your support for all that we do on the Presidio Campus, which actually is Newport Mesa Unified School District property. So we're, you know, we've been there for, I think, 50 years now, so. But I just wanted to introduce myself and just talk a little bit, very briefly, about some of my plans for Coastline ROP as it pertains to some of our students. My background is non-traditional for a superintendent of a regional occupational program. I spent about 20-plus years in television advertising sales, and then followed my wife to Anheuser-Busch in St. Louis, Missouri, and decided at that point to go back to college, go back to school and earn my doctorate in management, with, with an eye towards moving into higher education, which I did. And I ran the, the campus of Webster University in Irvine for about five years. And then I moved to Vitalink, which you may or may not be aware of. I was president of Vitalink for the previous two years during the pandemic. Absolutely loved that. And during that time, and kind of at the end of my time at Webster, what I decided was that I wanted to devote the rest of my career to impacting students, and in particular, in career and technical education, because I believe that it is an economic imperative that we provide students with other options than just four-year or, you know, flipping burgers. There's so much more in the middle. And so that's what I'm going to do with the rest of my career at Coastline ROP as the superintendent. I have a few key goals. One of the things that's really struck, that, that I really noticed when I attended Educating for Careers was that there were five conferences or five presentations on middle schools, and the importance of, the growing importance of middle schools for CTE at our school districts. And so we're going to undertake some initiatives to actually work with your folks to reach down into the middle schools and start talking to them about college and career exploration. We may partner with some other organizations to do that, but I think that that's something that can really have an impact. I want to spend quite a bit of my time being outside of the four walls of Coastline ROP, generating awareness of career technical education in ROPs with students and businesses, but also with parents. And so if there are any parents here and you don't know about ROP, I would like to talk to you, because I believe that parents sometimes can exert influence on their students and help students get into ROP. ROP and CTE classes are not just for those that are only going to go to a community college or, or straight into the workforce. They're for all students, right? Research shows that there are positive outcomes for, for all students, whether they're going to four-year, two-year, or straight into the workforce. Through that increasing awareness, I hope to build new partnerships and increase collaboration with our district partners. I just talked to one of the founders of Alteryx yesterday about launching a data analytics program in conjunction with Alteryx. They have already been working on curriculum. They have the platform for it. This is one of those areas that is horizontal across all industries. We want to be focusing on things like that and other curriculum pathways for careers in emerging technology areas, things like cybersecurity, AI, AR, VR, drones, cloud computing. We actually will have some things coming online this summer for those. We have four new summer programs that we're going to be rolling out this year in those areas. And then lastly, I feel very, very strongly that Coastline ROP and Newport Mesa, along with the other four districts, we have the best districts, we have the best students. We are where the businesses that matter in Orange County are. And so the, the, the parents of our students work at those businesses, and so they have a vested interest in this. And so I'm going to be working a lot on that to, to lead from the front. I believe Coastline ROP is the best ROP in Orange County, and I believe we should be leading from the front, and, and so that's what I will be putting a lot of my efforts on. To Dr. Smith's comment about getting out and visiting schools, I'm doing the same thing. I actually will be visiting Estancia and Costa Mesa Coastline ROP classes on Thursday and observing those. And again, thank you for your support and thank you for this time.
Thank you.
Before you leave?
Yes.
Thank you. I just want to thank you. We pride ourselves in providing an education for our students that is relevant to them as well as preparing them to make choices when they graduate. But the programs you provide are, are students and the other students are relevant to the students. They see that what you're teaching them is either fun or hands-on or interesting or could lead to a job.
Or all of those.
Or all of those, yes. And sometimes they don't understand why English Lit was going to matter later on in life, but it could if you're on Jeopardy. So it, it, it is such an important piece that school districts can no longer afford to have so many options. We rely on ROP, and we're thrilled to have ROP programs. So thank you very much, and from the bottom of my heart, welcome to the best edge of the world.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so I only had one informal board member report, because the rest of us, I think, were all at a lot of the same events since the last board meeting. But one thing I would really just like to share is I was at Newport L for an assembly with Brent Poppin, which some of you may know. He's at a lot of the schools. And he is a paraplegic who was injured as a high school student, and he used to give assemblies for lots of our elementary kids. He's very inspirational. It was really, really wonderful to see him be able to come back and talk to our students and just the, the impact that he had made and kind of where they saw their future going. Oh, and the other thing is I was volunteering at the Assistance League, and I saw a bunch of our step program students who were back there working and were so excited, because that was their first, their very first day back. They hadn't been back in, in three years. So that was really fun to work with them that day. That's it.
Take a deep breath. This is what I did. It's a big, long list. I'm only going to report on the fact that I attended the Addams Family musical and was, again, with my theater, if you build it, they will come. And I didn't even realize there were two complete casts, so they had four shows. I laughed through that program. It was so funny. They did a phenomenal job of casting, because you definitely could see the Addams Family performing. It was lots of fun, and it's just the beginning of all of our theaters and awards and wonderful things, so. Thank you. And our youth sports meeting was just a normal meeting, so.
Thank you.
Attended the return of the Battle of the Books this past week. This is, it's basically where fourth and fifth graders get to read a list of books, and they compete against, the schools compete, compete against each other in a fun competition. And the schools that, that were represented were Sonora Elementary, Anderson Elementary, East Bluff Elementary, and OLQA. And the, the really wonderful part is, oh, Our Lady Queen of Angels. And the setting was our Newport Beach Civic Center. And it was wonderful to see the collaboration of using a facility from the city and bring our schools and our kids to that venue is a wonderful, it was a wonderful event. We also, trustee Bartow and I hosted a, the Community Alliance for Bike and Safety initial meeting where we had many representatives from civic leaders, business partners in the community that were in, you know, that have bike shops. We have parent leaders. And we wanted to begin a discussion on what we can do as a district and as cities of Newport Beach and Costa Mesa to further education on bike safety and awareness. It was really a wonderful gathering. There was about 20 of us there, and it was a very good first meeting, and then we're going to have next steps. And lastly, we, trustee Metoyer and I attended the Community Advisory Committee for Special Ed, hosted by Julian, Director Juliana Sauvau, is that how you say her name? And that, the, that was a wonderful gathering of parents, trustees, and the district staff in order to engage parents who will, who need the support, because when you have a special needs student, where do you go as a parent? And how, how do you support others that are in the same situation? So that was a wonderful first step as well. Thank you. And then the Newport Mesa Schools, Schools Foundation sent us a thank you for the $500 grant that we sponsor every year, board members. And the LCAP Community Session for the Corona del Mar Zone is this Thursday. Is it, is it tomorrow? 3:30 at 6:00 PM in the Learning Resource Center, which is the, the library at Corona del Mar High School. Please attend if you can, and thank you.
Thank you. Several of us attended the Latinos Unidos Spring Dance at Newport Harbor High School. It was very crowded. There were so many kids there. And I just want to commend Dr. Bolton for the intentionality and support that he has given. Latinos Unidos is now one of the biggest clubs on campus, and the intentionality around cultural integration on the campus is really remarkable, particularly coming from where things were. So it was just a wonderful event. I think we all had a lot of fun when we were there. And then I also just wanted to say thank you to Vanessa Galey. The last ELAC was the best one that we've ever had. So thank you for the very authentic and engaging community engagement with the parents and hearing their perspectives. And thank you Sarah Coley for speaking on positive and restorative discipline. The parents that I sat with at my table loved her conversation. And then Laurie Hogard shared about summer school. It was like extremely relevant. Everyone got to stand up and get very engaged, so it was, it was a lovely and wonderful time, so thank you.
I have two things I'll talk about. One was the City of Newport liaison meeting, and we attended with trustee Yelsey and trustee Crane, and it was great. We talked about obviously cabs, bike safety. But more importantly, we talked about after-school programs and summer programs that are going to utilize our facilities. And then we, we did discuss the opportunities that we do have with the California Department of Education for their after-school types of programs and how we can collaborate when we get to that point. But they do some great work in the city of Newport by collaborating with our schools for after-school programs. Another thing, one little piece, I, I go to obviously Mariners Flag Deck a lot, but one thing that struck me was that they were raising funds for refugees from the Ukraine. And one student and his family went to Poland to help out these refugees. And what they're doing is they're zooming with the kids this week to show the kids where their donations are going. So there's boxes in each classroom to donate money. And, and in one week, they, they, they received about 1,200, or sorry, yeah, $1,200, and, which is great for one week, and the boxes will be there for, for weeks going on. But zooming with our students from an area that looks a lot different than refugees in Ukraine and refugees that, that are now in Poland and displaced with maybe just a backpack, I think it's a very good way for students to be able to step outside their little bubble and, and have a worldview of what children are experienced, experiencing throughout the world and to give back. So it was heartwarming.
And.
Broken.
Sorry. I just wanted to mention two just generalizations. One, I know all of us have been out to some of our area schools in the past two weeks since the mask mandate was lifted. And some observations that I had, one, there are some students who are still wearing masks, and no one that I encountered or any principal I talked to has seen any mask shaming or saying, why are you wearing a mask? Everything, everybody just accepts people not wearing masks, people wearing masks. And so it's really, it's been, that's been great. But also, just to see at the schools over the past two weeks, the amount of enthusiasm and engagement from students, especially at younger classes. I, I've told this to a couple people. I went to an elementary, a, a second grade class at Newport Coast, and the teacher, I tried to stand in the background when I go in, but she knew me, and she said, oh, Mrs. Yelsey, she's on the school board here. Does anybody have any questions for? And a little girl raised her hand like that, and she said to me, can I come give you a hug? And I said, sure. And then three other kids said, raised their hands, can I give you a hug? And I said, sure, we'll have a group hug. And you know what? That was like the best time ever doing that. And the kids just have smiles on their faces. They're just so happy to be doing what they feel is normal. And along those lines, Dr. Smith talked about being out. And I just want to thank you so much for how much you were out in the community and how much you just, if you, if we tell you something, we go, I was at Newport Coast Jog-a-thon and then went to Battle of the Bay, and I saw him there. I go, if you have some time, you may want to stop at Newport Coast, because it was the first day that parents were also allowed on campus. on campus, so there were a lot of them, and they were thrilled to be there and be involved. And he actually went up there and, you know, took a few minutes to go meet with the parents up there, which was really nice, and, uh, mentioned to him about the rally, and I go, if you ever want to see a high school rally, you should go to this. And he changed another appointment so he could go. So I just want to thank you for always just being out there and meeting all the parents. They very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can I close the meeting? Yes. Nicole, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you had anything you wanted to share, that's great, but if you're, you're all reported out for tonight, that's great. All right, thank, thank you. All right, um, I'm going to adjourn the meeting, I'm gonna let trustee Anderson.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I just, I wanted to close this meeting in honor of Barbara Van Holt. She was a longtime drama teacher and English teacher. I had her for AP English at Estancia, um, and a majority of students that went through Estancia had her at some point. Um, and she, the last conversation that I had with her, she said, please name the theater after me, it's my legacy to be on this campus. Um, and so I, I, that's, it's one reason the theater project has been so important to me. Um, so I just, I would love if there's a way that we can honor her, um, maybe like, I know in the past we've done certain things, but I, I know a lot of people didn't know. I didn't know, so, um, I'm not sure what we would, we could do on campus, but I just would like to do something special in her memory.
Thank you. So we adjourn the meeting in memory of Barbara Van Holt at eight forty-nine PM. Thank you very much.